If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please show all members of council present. Next up, we have review of the minutes of the November 4th, 2024 combined meeting. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward to reception of delegation. Gordian, sorry if I butchered any name, Robin Mer- Merhada? Perfect, nice. Cooperative procurement participation through the Maryland Department of General Services. The podium's yours if you'd like to start. All right, can you hear me okay? So first and foremost, just want to thank everyone here for giving me the opportunity to do this. I really appreciate it. You know, it's the week after Thanksgiving, it's late. I appreciate that. Today, I'll be going over the Maryland Department of General Services agreement that Gordian administers through the entire state, and just explaining the way it works. It is something that is available to you if you should choose to use it. So I just want to give you more information on exactly how it works, and then if you do choose to use it, I'll show you exactly how to do that as well. Any questions for me before I get in? Okay. So I'll go over a brief introduction of myself, some common construction challenges, what is JOC, J-O-C? How we can help, and then really take questions, next steps. If there are any questions before the end, feel free to stop me. So, my name is Robin Merhada. I am local to Maryland. I work throughout the entire state and all regions. And so, I see construction challenges all over the state, whether it's the eastern shore, the western part of the state, here in Carroll County, or, you know, down in St. Mary's, wherever it is. I've been there, and these are the main challenges that I typically see. So the first thing is aligning projects with strategic direction for the city. Rising costs, having reduced spending power, especially in today's day and age, how do you get the most bang for your buck with, you know, lumber prices going up and all these other materials that are starting to cost so much? Creating accurate cost construction data, which is, you know, pretty self-explanatory, but it kind of lends itself into the next topic, which is meeting project budgets and timelines. There's always, how can you take more off your staff's plate? Because, you know, especially as you get into the bid process, and you get into the RFIs, and you get into these different procurement challenges, it's a lot for one person, or maybe even a small team, to handle. And then, the largest thing is the lack of transparency and audibility of programs, which I'll go over. I'll go over how we solve all of these challenges. The first really important thing to understand is what is job order contracting? Has anyone heard of that before? Okay. Were you military, previous military?
No, I'm in the construction business.
Okay. So job order contracting, or JOC for short, it's an IDIQ contract vehicle. What that really means is it's an umbrella contract, okay? Instead of doing three projects that you need done separately, in three separate instances, or three separate RFPs, or three separate bids, it's an umbrella contract. You can do all three of those projects under one pre-approved contract, and that goes through different contract vehicles. You've probably heard of Sourcewell. They offer one in the state of Maryland. Omnia Partners offers another one in the state of Maryland. The one I'm talking to about today is the one specifically through the state of Maryland itself, through the Department of General Services. Because they were so tired of having to go through out-of-state cooperatives like Sourcewell, that's in Minnesota, which we still offer, if you'd like to use them, you're open to using them. But, they were like, let's create our own program that abides by Maryland procurement guidelines and Maryland laws for public entities within the state, such as yourself. So that's the one I'll be talking about today. Okay, so job order contracting, umbrella contract, Maryland Department of General Services put it together, that's the one I'm talking to you about today. It's a single, one-time competitively bid contract that awards multiple contractors the ability to come in and do work for public entities across the state, okay? And I'll explain how that works in a little bit. You can see here at the bottom on the left-hand side that construction tasks are based on preset costs. I'll explain more of that when I talk about how the state of Maryland actually set up their program. So this is the typical project solicitation process. I'm sure everyone here is familiar. It's long, it's lengthy, and this is what you usually have to do. If you have a renovation job, such as our first example on the top left, you're probably gonna prepare the design, develop the scope, put together the contract documents. You'll put out the RFP out to the street, you'll have folks bid on it, you'll probably have to advertise it in a specific manner that's, you know, in line with your procurement guidelines. You'll have to answer RFIs, you'll usually give it to the person who, you know, grades best on the rubric, the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And then, you finalize the contract, you issue it. The things that aren't listed on these steps are the ones that happen after you issue the contract, which is hoping you don't get hit with a bunch of change orders that add on to the cost of the job, that add on to schedule overruns, as well as really trying to beat an audit if you're using any federal or state or grant dollars, right? So, the typical solicitation process is pretty long. What we did with the Maryland Department of General Services and their job order contracting program is, we did all that upfront already with multiple vendors, okay? So, we created the contract documents, we had the pre-bid meetings, we answered the RFIs, we conducted formal bid openings. You can look it all up in Emma or e-Maryland Marketplace, and you can find all of the solicitation documents for how the state of Maryland awarded Gordian the contract to create a job order contracting program for them, and then we administer it as it continues for the next five years. So, once we did that, you have this umbrella contract that you can do multiple projects under through the state. And I'm gonna stop right there. I know that's a little confusing. Any questions for me so far?
Do you work for DGES, or do you work for Gordian?
I work for Gordian.
So, are there multiple contractors in each discipline that reply to, how do you, how do you get contractors lined up to do work onto the JOC?
Perfect, and I'm, that's actually one of my slides coming up.
Am I playing straight man for you?
Perfect, thank you. That was a great segue, I appreciate that. So, this is how the state program is organized, okay? On the left-hand side, you'll see how they split up the state. So DGES said, we want the state to have four separate regions. On the right-hand side, you'll see the region that you're in, which is Region 2, it's a central region. The reason they wanted to split the state into four regions, as you can imagine, construction costs and the amount of contractors that are willing to bid on Garrett County is different than St. Mary's, is different than Baltimore City, is different than Talbot County. So, each one of these regions, we went in with our cost estimators and our RS Means data, which we own, and we came up with the construction task catalogs. It's about 275,000 line items of construction costs and materials, and it's specific to your region. So that means lumber and drywall that you need in a renovation is different in Talbot County and Wacomiko County than it is here, than it is in Garrett County, than it is in Charles and St. Mary's County. And this is how we set up the program. So, when we were awarded the privilege of developing their job order contracting program, the first thing state of Maryland wanted us to do was come up with detailed execution procedures, how are we actually going to develop this program for them? So, once we had that completed, we did our outreach where we held pre-bid conferences, we answered questions, we advertised. We had, like I said, we had to put it all on Emma and ask for formal bids. Once that happens, the contractors who decide to bid on a specific region or a specific trade, because you can bid by region, and you can bid within that region by trade. So whether that's roofing, site work, flat work, stormwater, electrical, mechanical, they would bid an adjustment factor, which means in that 275,000 item catalog, that is, specific pricing for your region, for this piece of drywall, for me to install or demolish that, whether that's picking it up at Home Depot down the street, or waiting for that to come in from 16 weeks of a delay, whatever it is, for us to install or demolish that piece of material, this would be our cost with our overhead and profit for normal working hours, for non-normal working hours, which is, you know, overnight work, evening work, for prevailing wage, which is compliant with Davis Bacon and all those kind of federal rules that you need to follow, for non-pervailing wage. All of that was pre-bid upfront. Then, once they are awarded a contract, so once we say, you know what? Verified you, you paid your taxes in the state of Maryland, you're in good standing, you also came in at a reasonable factor that is verifiable, you've shown previous work history, your insurance is good, your certificates of insurance, and you get awarded the contract, we'll actually train the contractors on how to use a software to build the proposals. It's not like we step back and we're not involved. We are onsite with some of the initial steps before the construction is started, and even during the construction, we're happy to come out onsite sometimes. And I'll explain all that in a moment here. Did that answer your question from before? Okay, fantastic. So, there's some significant time savings there. If you look at a design bid build, you know, depending on the size and scope of the job, it can take upwards of a year, you know, six months to a year. I'm sure the marketing team did a great job with this slide, but, you know, six months to a year, depending on the size and scope of the job. With job order contracting, from us getting out onsite to you getting a PO issued, it can be about two to three weeks, once again, depending on the size and scope of the job. You also have the ability to incorporate designs, if you have a lot of work that needs specs or designs. A lot of folks like to use job order contracting because you no longer have to make the designs biddable and keep certain factors vague. You can make them buildable, and so therefore, those typical process of a design bid build is actually accelerated, is a way to put it, with using design with JOC. But I'm not here to talk about that, I'm here to talk about job order contracting, what it is. So, if you focus on this tops bar, it's about two to three weeks. Average size in Maryland's about $250,000 job. We've handled projects, we just signed a project that was 12 million bucks. We're doing a job down in PG County that's a $10,000 paint job. So, it really, we can handle anything, but in terms of average job, you're looking at about two to three weeks. I'm gonna kind of slide over this one. I kind of went over this, but you simplify the procurement process, and you eliminate a lot of the negotiations with having preset costs. You reduce your change orders. You're not gonna get change order on the backend. If it takes them three days longer to get the job done, it takes them three days longer to get the job done. You're not gonna get hit with a change order or a change in pricing because it's a pre-bid cost that they've already agreed to. So, this is the one I wanted to spend the most time on. We're not asking you to use us for every single project out there. There's gonna be things that you should put out to bid, quite frankly. But for the things where it makes sense to use job order contracting, we're a great tool to have in your back pocket. The first and biggest thing being strict deadline to use funds. If you're on an accelerated timeline for any reason, if you're using ARPA dollars, ESSER dollars, federal funds, state funds, grant monies, and there's a deadline you have to spend that by or lose the funding, or you have an accelerated timeline in terms of, you know, let's say you receive a grant, and you have a certain amount of time to put a scope back by and get, you know, and submit formal pricing. We can accommodate all of that because all of the contractors through the state of Maryland Department of General Services program are compliant to accept federal dollars, state dollars, they do prevailing wage, they can handle Davis Bacon wages as well, and they all do certified payroll. So if you are looking to spend any type of money where there are strict, not only deadlines, but really strict rules and regulations about how to spend it, and you might get an audit, the job order contracting program through the state is an effective way to get those funds obligated and projects started, quite frankly. And the only other thing, the only other two things I'm gonna touch on on this slide are lengthy procurement processes. Like I said, we set up this with the state of Maryland to get work done quicker for them. They just allow public entities to piggyback off of it. DGES, Department of General Services, state of Maryland uses this every day for projects. We work with State Highway and a number of other state agencies that are using this, Department of Natural Resources. But if you want to piggyback off of this contract and use it as a public entity in the state, get to do that and shorten your procurement cycle. The only other thing is limited contractor availability. You do have the ability to identify local qualified subcontractors if you, you know, if we're doing a renovation for you and there's seven trades in there, and you really have a great flooring guy who lives in this city and pays taxes here, and you want him to get the business, you are fully allowed to, as the state of Maryland says, give that contractor the business for that piece of the flooring. You know, the liability and all that would still fall under the general contractor who holds a contract with the state, and they'd still have to be okay with it, but you can request that, as long as they're qualified, we can do that. Not gonna touch on any of this, except the expertise. Only thing you need to know is we invented job order contracting in the 80s. It was a way for NATO to build airstrips in different countries. Guy who founded us thought, wow, I came up with this great way for contractors to do this work in all different countries. Why don't we have a way to do this in the military? If you are previous military in Navy or Army and heard of the Sabre Program, we were that. And now we've expanded to public sector and healthcare. So, if you're using public dollars, you're probably using Gordian. We also own RS Means, which is a catalog of construction cost data dating back to the 1920s. We bought them about a decade ago. So a lot of our construction data and pricing comes from that as well, over the past over 100 years. Not really much to touch on here. This is the five-step process. Let's say you need a job done, let's say you need a roof done. First thing we do is we'd come out onsite and take a look at the project. We would walk the job in person. You have the ability to either choose a contractor from the list of the 29 contractors that got awarded in Region 2, in your region, or you can ask us who we'd recommend. Some folks like to ask us who we'd recommend because, let's say you want someone who's local, we can let you know, hey, this person has a PM or superintendent in the area, or you have a special type of project, hey, you need a rubber roof, well, these guys are really good at that compared to one of the other 29 that are on this list. Okay, so for your region, you have 29 contractors, you can pick from one of them when it comes time to actually looking at a job. Once we get out onsite, we take a look at the project, the Gordian team and the contractor puts together a detailed scope of work. If you have a detailed scope of work already, fantastic. If not, we'll put that together, or a narrative scope, whatever you'd prefer, we'll get that approved by you. Then, we'll pull up the task catalog for your region, and the contractor will go in, I think everybody here has seen it, a line item proposal that breaks down the exact number of quantities and the exact materials that they need to get that job done. Those prices include the cost to install or demolish, and it's a full pricing, whether it takes them, like I said, two extra days, two extra weeks because of snow or whatever, to get the job done. That is what they have agreed to. Then, we'll review it once or twice, or as many times as we need to, to make sure that everything's appropriate. We can say, hey, you know, Jim said he'd be providing dumpsters, why do you have dumpsters in the proposal? We can have them remove that. And then from there, you get that in your hands, and you can say, yes, we'd like to move forward, no, we wouldn't, or hey, let's value engineer, let's de-scope the work, whatever the case may be. Typically, like I said, this process from step one to you having that packet in your hands is about two to three weeks. So when you compare that to a traditional bid process, you're looking at getting work started fairly quickly. So, this is some of my recommended next steps for the city. The piggyback agreement's already executed. We've already developed scopes for some of the projects, we've reviewed them, making sure they align with your contract requirements. If you're looking to get any of that work approved, feel free to move it forward to the next step. If you have any questions about changing materials, value engineering, de-scoping, increasing the scope, we're happy to talk through that with you as well. And then I'm gonna skip through this. State and local proof points, 500 local governments, not only across the country, but we work internationally as well now. So, over the past five years, 1.6 billion in construction volume. I'm gonna skip through this, skip through this. These are Gordian Maryland customers. Some notable ones are Carroll Community College, Carroll County, as well as Thurmont, which we actually just started working with them about last month. And Carroll County Public Schools. So, we're really like Carroll County, so I'm trying to get at, so we'd love to work with you all as well. But, that's really all I've got, and I'll take questions.
The costs you say are based per region. Now, there's, working in Anarundel or Baltimore or Harford, is that reflected in your prices, or is it just one price fits all?
The prices are the same within the region. However, they are updated every year, so they actually just got updated in October, and they were reflected accordingly. That is just how the state of Maryland wanted to split it up. That was not up to Gordian, that's how DGES wanted to set up their program.
And mentioned the, sometimes two to three, three weeks turnaround is important, and sometimes it's not. What would be, I mean, would it be possible maybe to include Gordian in our requests for pricing and open it up to other contractors too, and then compare what we get, or what? Done, you'd either do it one way or the other.
That's a great question. I'll answer in two parts, thank you for that. So, we typically try to get proposals turned around in two to three weeks. That's based on the average of about a job that be about average size of Maryland jobs, $250,000. Anything that around that number is about two to three weeks of a turnaround. Anything less than that, like if we're doing like just painting an interior room, it's $5,000, $10,000 or $100,000. We'd probably get that turned around for you in less than two weeks, in terms of getting you a proposal. We worked with Calvert County Parks and Rec, it was a four and a half million dollar purchase order. I mean, that took us like a month to put together, you know? It's, it kind of all depends on the size and scope of the job. We typically don't compete in the bidding process. The reason for that is, the point of job order contracting is for projects where the bidding process doesn't make sense. So, if you are putting things out to bid, you know, feel free to continue doing that for the projects where it makes sense. But let's say there's a time-sensitive job, or a renovation, or it's more time, energy, and effort from you guys and your team to put together a bid and wait six months. That's something that you'd call us for.
Be interested in us sending out an RFP, for example, and collecting all our bids, and then say, hey, let's see what Gordian can do.
Yeah, we do not like to put ourselves out there as an estimating service. We're like, hey, if you need this project completed, like, let's say you guys needed boilers, right? It's December, it's supposed to snow tonight here. When I was sitting in my car, I was listening to the, to the radio station, hearing them talking about the snow, and if you needed boilers right now, would you really have time to put a bid package together and put it on the street and advertise it, and then collect three bids and grade them? And you'd be freezing at the next meeting. So that's an example where job order contracting makes sense, and we'd love to come in and, you know, show you what we're capable of. Now, I will say this, if there is a specific project in mind that you'd like us to take a look at, let us know. There's been times where people will put projects out, and they get three or four bids, and they aren't quality, or they're on us, quite frankly, like too high, or whatever it is. And they're like, okay, we can't do this through traditional means, let's have the Gordian guys look at it, or we're open to that. But not, hey, we're gonna have you guys come out, price this up, and then we're gonna, you know, put this out on the street.
So, I didn't know you guys owned the RS Means catalog, so essentially, you're, you're taking the regionally adjusted RS Means guide and just using that for unit costing?
No, I actually got a slide about that in here, I'll show you. So these are the differences between the construction task catalog and the RS Means data from Gordian. The most important being the pricing specificity. So RS Means pricing catalog been around since the 1920s, over 100 years. The costs are calculated using national averages, labor, materials, equipment, and they can be adjusted to about 970 different regions in the US. Pricing specificity for the construction task catalog is actually a little bit more specific because we not only use RS Means data, but we actually have a team of cost estimators that will come up with pricing for that specific region that the client wants. So, it's, it's not based on, you know, national averages or anything like that, it is.
And then, so with that, so once you have your 270,000 or whatever it is line items, then as I understand it, contractors then price with an adjustment factor?
Yes.
So, when I looked at the estimate for the roof, and I see that 1.38, it means that the actual price is 38% higher than your unit prices?
1.38, yes. Yep, and that's specific to each trade, so you can have the same company that does general construction and does electrical, and they have two different factors. That factor could also be for prevailing wage or non-pervailing wage, working hours, non-normal working hours.
I get it.
Yeah.
Then, the thing for me though is, when I look at the roof proposal that you all did, everything was on a 1.38 factor.
Yep, exactly.
Who determined the quantities, and how were those quantities determined?
So, the factor will typically, should all be the same, right? Because if all the work is being done during normal hours, and it's all, you know, non-pervailing wage, it should kind of all be the same. If you're installing or demolishing everything for that project between, you know, nine and five, and it's not prevailing wage, it should all be the same.
That's just the markup, right?
Yeah.
That's, well, I mean, it's not, it's not really, it's, as I understand it, it's not markup per se. It's what the subcontractors bid as a factor based on the catalog of unit prices that you have. Am I right there?
But, that includes their overhead.
That includes their markup. I mean, I understand all that. That's not, that's not the question. You know, my question is, like I said, we had, I don't know how many pages there were to that, but everything was on a 38, on a, on a 1.38 factor, or 38% markup on the prices that were in your catalog, which one would have thought would have already included overhead and profit in those items.
Well, overhead and profit varies by?
That varies by contractor, and I understand that. But, so, I'm trying to understand a little bit about process here. So if a contractor wants to, if you had two roofing contractors that wanted to bid on our roof, if one had a .32 markup and one had a .38 markup, would you take the point? Is that, is that kind of, how do you determine who, what contractor gets that work?
That's a great question. So, it's up to you. What we typically do is we'll ask you if you'd like to pick somebody from the list of the approved contractors in your region, and we're happy to just choose the one with the lowest factor or the cheapest price. But typically, what most people do, and what most, what folks did in this scenario, is ask us who we'd recommend. Because, we can give you a better idea of, hey, does this person have a super PM that lives, you know, down the street in Thurmont? And can they be here every day in person versus someone who is based in Northern Virginia, and yeah, they're gonna give you the cheapest factor, but, you know, they're, they're a little bit further away. Is there a specific type of roof that you need? The reason we went with Dynamic is they're the same roofer that the Department of General Services used, and they actually recommended them to us for a new client because they were so impressed. So that's why we wanted to offer them to you.
I have nothing to say one way or the other. I don't know Dynamic, I've never been around them, I don't
Me either.
It's not a name, it's not a name I, I know.
Yeah, this is my first project with them, but the person in charge of construction and energy at the Department of General Services was the one who recommended them. And we want to make sure you guys got a good experience, that's why we went with them.
Let's get back to the quantities. You sent a proposal that had a lot of stuff in it.
Yep. Yep.
Had a lot of individual quantities. Who measures all that? How does that get proofed in the end, so that we're not paying for five, you know, where there's 500 square feet of pointing masonry in here, and maybe they only did 150? Verifies that, and how does that get, uh, how does, how does that credit or any overage get, you know, back to the contractor?
Yep, so that's a, that's a fantastic, uh, question, and one we get all the time. Um, so, it works two ways. The, let me go back to this really quick. So, uh, when the contractor puts together their pricing proposal in step three, in step four, someone from Gordian will review it to make sure the quantities look accurate, or accurate as they can be for a job that, like you said, we, we, we don't know much about. And we will go back and forth with them, like I said, two, three, four times. And then, once it gets to you, you also get to take a look at it. Now, when the job is completed, if there is any, or not even when it's completed, when it's in progress, if there is something that deserves a credit, we can credit that back to you. If there's something that needs to be adjusted, you can order a supplemental, and we'll go through the same five step process while we come out on site. Okay? The other piece of that is, if it's something like, you know, like if you're, if you need 100 screws in this room, and we give you 98, we're not gonna do anything about that. But at the same time, if there is, you know, a, a piece of a wall that, that needed two extra screws, you know, and it's somewhere else in the proposal, you'll-
Well, I mean, it's like the variation estimate quantity clause in the state, you know, you got, you got some percentage on either side of that.
Yeah, no one's gonna-
And, you know, I'm not trying to pinch pennies here, but-
That's okay.
For example, in, in the proposal that you sent over, um, there were two sets of scaffolding.
Right.
One of which was enough to cover this building and scaffolding all the way around to a height of 24 feet. Now, if you walk outside and you look at this building, you know you can't put scaffolding all the way around this building.
Right.
Can't put anything over here. You're not putting anything in my driveway, and, you know, it's not really necessary on this side, because you got the flat work to roof, to, flat roof to work off of over here. So, you know, yeah, scaffolding and sidewalk protection out front, I get it. But, that's not what was in the proposal. And what was in the proposal was not just the one time to do that. It was in there twice. Uh, same thing with a man lift, you know? Yep, gonna need a man lift, because you can't get scaffolding over here, so you gotta use a man lift.
Gotta use a man lift, yeah.
But there were two, in, in two different places. And that stuff totaled out to be like $60,000 or $70,000.
Yep, a- and the beautiful part of that is, we're happy to talk to you about that, and if you want a value engineer, we can sit down and look through that proposal, and-
My point is that, that's why we're supposed to be using you, is that you do that. We shouldn't have to do that.
Just to check, you, you were saying that they can't come back with change orders on the projects once they, once they accept it? Is that what you were saying?
Yep.
So, are they, do they overcompensate materials to make sure they can't come back for change order, if that makes sense?
No, that's one of the things that, the, the only time they can order a supplemental is if there is something that, like, if we were doing interior rent, and we knocked this wall down, and we find a bunch of mold that wasn't, we didn't know about before, we have to ask you and get it approved, and then we can come out on site and even look at a supplemental.
Great, I mean, I, I, and I get that. I mean, you know, these, these things happen. This is a 100-year-old building, you know, um, but just some of these, some of the items in, in that proposal seem to be over the top to me.
Yeah, and I completely understand where you're coming from in terms of the scaffolding. Um, I am by no means a scaffolding expert, and I'm not gonna pretend to be and try to give you an answer.
Neither am I, but I mean, you know, when they give you a number of 100 cubic feet of scaffolding, it's not hard to figure out what that number is.
Right, but wha- what I can do is, I can have, um, Rich Astle and Luke Reinhardt, the two folks that combined, I think they have 50 years of construction experience. They're the ones that actually do that. I don't review the proposals. I can have them sit down, and we can chat through whatever changes that you'd like to take a look at, and they can sure justify why or why they did not have that in there. I know they reviewed that proposal a couple times before they sent it out to you, so if it's in there, there's good reason for it. And, uh, I can have them, you know, send you over some information on why it is, or if you'd like to change it, we can discuss changing it.
Well, you know, like I said, I, I have, I mean, I understand, and, and, you know, when it came time to seal this roof back up because we had a problem, obviously, absolutely, yeah, because we use Gordian right to come out here, and, and didn't they, didn't that, how that would happen?
Right, the, the contractor that came out did do the temporary repair.
Right, and that was under the JOC, or was that?
No, he, he just did that, because he felt bad.
They just, they did not bill us for that.
Oh. But, I mean, I can understand where that would be, someplace where you would use this process, because you don't have time to wait. The roof leaks, you know? But, when that's stabilized, and you have a little bit of time to look at it, I, you know, and I just made a cursory look through, through the estimate. And just to give you some background, I'm estimating project management is what I do.
Yep.
So, when I look at an estimate like that, and I see things that look duplicative to me, and, and costs that look high to me, and, uh, and I'm now understanding where your data comes from, me, that's just a, and I, I, you know, I'm 40 years of being a hard bid guy, right? So, it strikes me wrong. But, that doesn't mean you're wrong. It just means that I have a healthy-
And I completely understand that. You have a ton of experience, and that makes sense.
I'm done beating you up.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it.
It was really more about the, the program overall.
And, 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 and you're answering my questions. I mean, I, it, it, these are the questions that I had when I first saw the, the proposal, so-
That's okay. Usually, I sit here and no one says anything, and then I leave, so this is way better than that.
I'm done. Thank you.
Dynamic, they're the same ones who did the patchwork, right? I mean, they would, I mean, they have a decent idea of what the scope of the overall job is.
I think after, after, uh, the question arose about the scaffolding, you know, I, I think there was a, an initial response, and, and I, we hadn't intended to really delve into the roofing proposal this evening, so-
No, and, and with that, yeah, that can go to a-
My understanding was that it was listed under, uh, both cupola and, and the, the-
Right, exactly. And that's what I'm talking about. It's like, there were scaffolding listed under the cupola, but it's like, why is that different from the scaffolding that's there for the roof?
So, I think it was, you know, up to a certain point was, you know, for the, um, the roof such, and then it's like, an additional level of scaffolding, and the higher you go, the pricier it gets. That was my understanding of how it was broken out into two segments.
However, you're not gonna, where the cupola is, you're not gonna reach from scaffolding. You're gonna do that from, uh, from a lift.
Just to, I mean, we have that until what, the end of this month, right? Are you able to just kinda reach out about the scaffolding before Monday?
Certainly get some-
Yeah, I know, again, I know this wasn't particularly about the roofing part, but again, just because I know we are running out of time if this is something we're considering for that. But, again-
I'm not gonna tie up any more of the meetings.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to take you off.
Yeah, I mean, this is just for whatever projects you have coming down the line.
Right, and, and, and I understand, you, you wanted us to understand what the process was, because it kinda came out of left field at us with this, you know, big unit price thing that came at us. Um, thank you for, uh-
Job order contracting is confusing. I mean, you know, like, when I started here, I was telling Jim earlier, I had somewhat of a construction background, but hadn't really worked with too many IDIQ contracts, and it's, you know, so, it, it's not something that you hear every day or, or talk about at home, and so, I wanted to make sure that everyone's got a good understanding of how the process works.
It's a good process for expedited contracts, for sure.
Yeah, if it's the right type of-
Right, if you have that need to be expedited, but if you don't have that need to be expedited, you should be, I, I, to me, you should be a little more penny wise with your, with your-
Spence of developing a, a bid specification or design,
Yes.
you know, may not be the, the most practical approach.
Right, you know, i- if you're gonna save $50,000, you don't wanna put that back in to spend to a engineer, because then you haven't saved anything.
Well, something that actually works well with the design is, folks will typically have the design done through job order contracting, and then when it's, you know, through whatever design firm you wanna work with, but because it's through job order contracting, when it's like 75 or 80% of the way there, not only are they happy because they didn't have to make it biddable, they can make it buildable, so they usually build the specs a lot faster, but we can already start pricing out some of the construction for you before it's even done, because it's like 80% done, and we can pretty much have it done quicker than that two or three week turnaround. And then, let's say the project, the pricing from us is too much. Well, you still own the design, you paid for it. So, that's, that's another way to spin it around, that, that a lot of people like to do. The, the program's meant to be moldable to your needs, you know?
That was that second one, right, where it showed, where you had the design? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thurmont, for example, I mean, they were working with, um, federal dollars, and, and they needed them encumbered, so, we, uh, worked on a, a blanket purchase order for a number, for a few different projects all at once, with the scopes in there. Um, and then they can draw down against that as they like. That's, that's an option you have. I mean, there, there's a number of ways to work in job order contracting and get the projects done. I mean, yeah, at the end of the day, we're, we're all here on the same team, right, to get the, get the work done for the people, so.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? And thank you, appreciate it.
Fantastic. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Next up, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council members like to make a statement? Hearing none proceeding down, public comment pertaining to non agenda items. Do we have any public comment pertaining to non agenda items? Hearing none proceeding down, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements, resolution 2024-15, water allocation for December. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none proceeding down, resolution 2024-16, fee schedule for 2025. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Are these, uh, the same fees from last year, or we, have we raised?
There are no, no changes proposed at this point.
When was the last time we changed that?
Been quite a few years. Uh, I think the last time we might have added some specific zoning categories or something like that. So, we had talked several years ago about possibly raising some of the fees, and at the time, there was no appetite from council to do so. Uh, so, we've pretty much been leaving them. There are some fees that, uh, probably are due to be revisited.
Yeah. The meter reading fee of $15 doesn't, that probably doesn't cover it.
And, and some of the zoning certificate fees, for example, you know, we spend more than $5, you know, between the time we review, say, a fence or a deck application, and then go out, and, you know, for the items that we do inspect that the county doesn't, small sheds, fences, things like that, you know, we're, we're spending way more than $10 in staff time to process the application issued with permit, take the money, and then go out and inspect it when it's done. But, as I said, that, it's been that case for a while. Uh, but, you know, if, I, I would suggest if there is any interest to revisiting the fee schedule, perhaps we do that as part of our, our budget process in the coming year. And maybe we make, I, I know we, we'd like to adopt it, you know, year by year. But if there is appetite, we can kinda delve into some of them in a little more detail, and think about it maybe to adopt at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Included in the budget process, I think we, I think we need to look at those. I, I looked at those, those fees, and they seemed awful familiar. Now, I can't say that I remember what they were from five years ago. But, uh, I, I, I don't think they've, I don't think they've been done for the, since I've been mayor, so.
You know, for, uh, for a, a deck, or, or a shed, or pool, you know, our zoning certificate fee is $5. If we have to actually send somebody out to take a look at it, we're losing money every time Daryl goes out the door. You know, and considering that, that they're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on these units, I don't see any reason we couldn't up that fee a little bit and try to recover our cost. Not that I'm in favor of, you know, trying to balance budgets on the backs of people's fee schedule, but we oughta be at least recovering our costs in a manner.
I come up with, you know, some recommendations as we, as we go through the budget process.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none proceeding down, city manager report, Jim?
Uh, running through the standard items, uh, capital equipment, uh, our VAC truck is expected to be here in January. Our next utility truck is at the upfitter. Saw some photos of it today, uh, so we should be getting that by the end of the month. Vehicles, uh, finally, finally caught up on police vehicles. You may recall, we, we struggled and weren't able to get police vehicles for a very long time, and we actually switched the make of vehicles, um, because of that. But, uh, you know, kind of a happy, uh, item this month that a couple Ford Explorers became available. And, um, we were scheduled to have two more vehicles, so, um, so, we will be caught up, uh, once those are all through the upfitter. Um, you know, having some challenges with, with getting that turned around right now, that, to get all the extra lights and equipment, uh, upfitted to some of the vehicles. But at least we've got the cars that we couldn't get for, you know, I mean, this'll be the first year in a long time we haven't to roll, haven't had to roll the purchase of police vehicles into the next year, because we just couldn't get them. Uh, no updates on the next couple items, chartering code or Roberts Mill. We, we got a couple more signatures on the Ruffles Lane storm drain, and the only one that remains is one that we have to do grading on the property, but the actual storm drain will not be located on the property, so I'm hoping we might be able to talk that property owner into more of a right of entry than a formal receptive or responsive to that. And hopefully, you know, we'll get that going within the next month. Let's see, the FY24 sewer rehabilitation, um, if you've headed out, out of town, on the west end of town, you've driven across the patch uh, on Route 140, so the contractor's finished with the new manholes and the, um, realignment of the sewer under the state highway, um, and has already moved out of that way, that area, and, um, they've kinda juggled the schedule a little bit to avoid being in the area of the tree lighting for this weekend. Um, so they're kinda jumping, you know, to different sections to keep that area of the park as tidy as, as they can, um, until after the tree lighting's done, and then they'll jump back to that section. But that, that work is progressing very nicely. You know, everything's been on schedule, and, and, uh, contractor's been very, very good to work with thus far. Have a couple other items, uh, that have come up in, since the packets went out. I had emailed everybody about this, I think, last week. There's a, a home on Harney Road that has a failing septic system. And, uh, for those who have been around for a few years, we encountered this with some properties on Stumptown Road, uh, where the health department wanted them to connect to the city sewer. So, since we have a policy of not extending water and sewer services outside of the city limits at this time, we would want them to annex and order to connect. So, um, if, if there are concerns about that, please feel free to share them with me now, but Monday, I would like to, you know, look for a, a motion and vote to direct staff to develop an annexation agreement, um, to bring the house, you know, bring the home into the city limits so they can connect.
Which, which home is that?
It's, uh, 3300 Harney Road. It's the last, uh, if you're heading out of the city, it's the last ranch home on the left before you get to the school farm.
Oh, that's the one that just is for sale now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's kinda what prompted all of this. They had, uh, uh, the health department came out and did an inspection.
Is it just the house, or is there acreage with the property?
Um, it, I-
I think it's, yeah, I think it's a- It's just a lot. It's just a residence, it's a lot.
Right, it's not a large amount of acreage. It's not like anything that's subdivisible, so it's just one existing house, so the traffic is already being generated. The school capacity is already being used.
This has been talked about for some time, hasn't it? I remember a conversation years ago about this. I heard there were three or four properties out there that, on this-
There's, um, so, prior to the policy of not extending services outside of the city, there were properties that were connected to water or sewer, or sometimes both. Houses along Harney Road are, on the left side of Harney Road, leaving town, are, once you get past Sobles Inn, which is now Recovery 180, um, the houses are not within city limits, but most of, I guess, the first four are served by definitely ci- city sewer, if not both sewer and water. It's come to our attention a few times, because in the past, the city has cleaned, uh, the private lateral that serves those homes and connects to a city main. city main. And several years back, the city said, you know, this, this is, you know, a private lateral that you're on, you know, we'll maintain it from the main on, but anything on your side of the main, you have to maintain just like any other private home would. Um, so there was talk of possibly bringing them in, you know, and if the sewer property does develop, perhaps the carrot there would be, you can get rid of your private line and connect to the main when the sewer farm develops or something like that, at which point we would, you know.
Should we dangle that carrot in front of all of those houses on that, on that strip?
So, um, certainly that would be beneficial for the city. I don't know if that's a reasonable ask for the home that has the failing system right now to make their annexation incumbent on other individuals choosing to annex or not. So.
Annex each, each property individually?
We could.
Just kind of pursue each one individually? Where's the, where does the main end? Is there a manhole at which it stops and then everything else is like on a house connection?
There is a manhole across the street at, well, I, I think it's like the third house from the end, maybe the fourth house from the end. So apparently, my, well, my understanding is the last few houses on the right-hand side of the road as you leave town, uh, have private force mains up to a manhole from which, at that point then, it's gravity flow back into the rest of the system. So there's not a manhole like all the way out at the very last house. The main stops shy of that.
When you go further, it has to go the other way because the, the geography goes downhill and so there's nowhere for it to go.
Right. So the, right. So the apartments, for example, that are behind the single-family homes, um, have a private pumping, you know, grinder pump to get up to the point where gravity flow can go and apparent, and so do those last couple of houses. So this house, um, 3300 would in all likelihood, you know, have to have a private force main to pump the sewage up to the point where it can gravity flow. So they would, you know, if there's, uh.
They have to run that in the street?
They would, they would have to cross the street.
Cross the street, but not run it up along the, or?
Um.
We don't need to bog down the details, but I'm just.
I'm not, because, because the homes on that side of the street are served by a private lateral, um, you know, if they worked out some agreement to share that lateral with one more house, I suppose they could do that, um, directly to the sewer system.
They don't want to spend any more money than they have to because they're trying to sell the house.
So, um, so Monday I'll be looking for, you know, a more, more formal action to, you know, start developing an annexation agreement and start having those conversations with the property owner and their representatives. So, uh, so we got that one. Uh, just wanted to touch base on Main Street real quick. Um, are there any preferences on, you know, we, we know we're going to be having some Main Street conversations for the, the next couple of months at least. Um, do we want to tackle that, like in the sequence of the letter of agreement with the state, the, kind of the sequence that Mish laid things out, uh, last month? Or are there areas specifically that, that council would like to tackle, you know, as more of a priority rather than going through it? The way the, the way the letter of agreement flows. If, if there are no preferences, you know, we'll probably just do it the, in the sequence that Mish presented things and just try to knock out, you know, item by item to make sure we're addressing the letter of agreement with the state.
I'd say letter of agreement with state and then make sure we're hitting all the markers for it.
Okay. So we'll, we'll proceed that way. So probably starting next month, we'll, we'll put, you know, a couple of those, uh, items that we want to counsel to weigh in on, um, on, you know, on for discussion each, each month for the next, next couple, maybe a few months.
Would it be wise to try to prioritize the items in that report? In other words, what I'm thinking about would, would it be wise maybe for council to review that in detail individually and then come with a top three or something like that and then tackle them in that order?
That, that's, that's what I'm asking is, would you rather do it that way or, you know, so I'm, we're open to do it either way. Um, you know, but.
I think if we just start from the beginning and go to the end, it'd take us forever to do that. Uh, but, but if we, if we would come up with priorities individually and everybody submit their priorities and chances are, many of our priorities are the same. So it would, the stuff that needs to get addressed first would be on top of the list and the stuff that was less important to be addressed would be on the bottom of the list. And if, if, if this, I, my concern about all along has been this dragging this out. And I just think that we need to, if we had to go in with a set of priorities rather than, that was a very nice report. It was a very meaty report. There's a lot, a lot of, a lot of information in there. I'm not sure I still have digested it all, but, uh, I think if we, if we come in with, I don't know whether it's a top three or the top one or the top five. I don't care what, what number you pick. But if we did that, we would, we, we would be able to take a, take affirmative action to the, for an action plan rather than talk about something for twenty, you know, for, for an hour in, in a council meeting and then decide this was not worth doing right now, we'll postpone that. I mean.
Well, I'll, I'll ask if, uh, if council would, you know, maybe revisit the report that Mish, um, emailed out, um, for those, those discussion points for council. And perhaps Monday night, we can, you know, have this on for some discussion and, and then if, um, you know, we can come to, uh, concurrence on maybe the first three, you know, areas of recommendation that we want to focus on, um, we can certainly tackle it that way.
One of the things that we talked about last month was to maybe have a special meeting and that would be certainly an open session meeting, um, to talk about how we want to attack this, whether we want to, you know, to talk about whether we want to, and because obviously I don't think we've, we've, we've digested enough of it to know whether we want to go item by item or want to pick priorities. We really probably don't, we're not ready to answer that question right now anyway, are we?
Well, my only worry is we end up debating priorities and wasting time when we could have just started the season.
And, and there's something to be said for that, but I think we ought to, I, I think we ought to do that and I think we ought to, um, you know, not, uh, bog down a, a council meeting for that. And that's, you know, this is important enough, I think, to, to do something, um, you know, in, in the same way that the, uh, planning commission is handling the comp plan.
And in, in our discussions at, you know, between Director Mish and myself, you know, just at the staff level, you know, we, we kicked around, you know, do we start with the, you know, what might be the, um, the, the item that might have the longest timeline, you know, kind of the critical path idea that if we want to have, say, eighty percent of the rules and, you know, operating guidelines in place before another board is seated, you know, maybe that becomes our priority because that may take a, a longer period of time to nail down, you know, what we want, you know, how, what the responsibilities of each committee is going to be, um, if we do modify what's on the National Main Street Center, for example. Um, but maybe, maybe setting up those, uh, you know, what if anything needs to be in the code versus what is going to be set by resolution and then nail down those operating procedures. So then we could maybe start to, start recruitment efforts for, for board members. Um, you know, maybe we could be doing that while we're working out some of the other details if we get the framework in place first. So those, those are some of the things that we discussed. And then, you know, leading up to the workshop, it was like, well, let's see what council thinks, you know, do they want to go through it, you know, A, B, C, D, or pick, you know, what they think is the biggest priority to focus on, um, to start with. So.
So as a, should that be our homework assignment for Monday night is to come prepared with what, how we want to, how we want to discuss how we want to attack it?
I, I think, you know, that's, I mean, yeah, hopefully we can have some discussion Monday night on that then. Uh, we kind of touched on the, the city hall roof and, and exterior repairs, uh, project a bit earlier. Um, but we did reach out to another contractor who's been working on an estimate. Uh, they didn't have it ready in time for this evening. We're hoping to have it Monday. Um, so I would like to put the topic on Monday's agenda in anticipation that we will have a second estimate, um, at which point, assuming we do get the other estimate, perhaps we can make a decision, um, between the two proposals. Um, as I said, it's not in hand yet, but I'd rather put it on the agenda and have to pull it off. If we don't get the proposal, then try to add it, you know, Monday at three o'clock or something. So.
Put it on the agenda.
And the last thing, uh, also, this just came in after the council packets went out. Uh, we're ready to, uh, execute Evapco's public works agreement for their parking lot project where they demolished the homes on the opposite side of Allen Dale Lane from the headquarters building. Uh, but we don't yet have the bond or the construction surety. So Monday night, I would like to, uh, if council's willing to authorize the mayor to execute the public works agreement when we do receive the surety. I touched base with the city attorney who drafted the PWA. Um, he was comfortable with moving forward that way. So assuming the surety comes in, you know, next Wednesday, um, we can go ahead and let Evapco get started with their permits, um, rather than having to wait until February meeting to approve the public works agreement. So the PWA's been reviewed by the city attorney. He actually drafted it. Um, and the city engineers okay the dollar amounts in there and everything. So really, we're just waiting for Evapco to provide the, um, the bond. So that'll be on for Monday night as well. And, uh, that's about it for me unless somebody has, uh, questions.
Questions, comments, concerns, council?
Yes. Um, I have gotten a number of comments from various, um, businesses in the downtown area. Um, and Director Mish put the ad that he placed in the Gettysburg Times in the report. And I had not seen this before, but if you look at this ad, it looks like there are two businesses in Tony Town. I have a very long list of things here that I want to talk about that come out of this because frankly, it, it feeds into the Main Street discussion and we ought to be thinking a little harder about what we're doing. Um, you know, we placed an ad in the Gettysburg Times in a town that has dozens, if not, you know, a hundred businesses in their downtown that, you know, uh, are the kinds of things that people would want to go shop a small business Saturday for. And we put out an ad that looks like we have two businesses. And, and we put it in, in a, in a paper that serves a community of a hundred thousand people. And it seems like we're, we've, that was a bit of a waste. So in my question, I, and I have a number of questions and this, I have to bear with me because I'm going to go through all of this. So, uh, did we use Main Street money to, to, to buy this ad? And if we are using Main Street money to buy an ad, why are we buying an ad that promotes two businesses and not the twenty odd that are actually in our downtown? The other thing that was mentioned to me by definitely much more than one person was the entire, um, Small Business Saturday activity thing. Um, almost none of the businesses in downtown, certainly none of the ones that I talked to, um, were actually invited to participate. Ambassadors actually invited themselves because they happened to have a face painter who came into their store and said, oh, sure, I'd like to do that. And Paul Kluth went to Jamie Ashen's and volunteered to do that, but before that had not been contacted from what I understand, from what Paul told me directly. I talked to several other of our mainstay businesses on Main Street who were not contacted at all. Um, and so my question is, why not? Where were the American Express kits? Where are the county passports? When the, when the flyer came out, it had a slightly revised map and there were two more businesses on it, ambassadors being one and Tony Town Family Barbershop because they were having, uh, the hair utensil thing, uh, like they had done the previous year. There are eighteen other businesses in downtown Tony Town that were simply left out. Little or no advanced promotion, I saw one Facebook post and that was from a private citizen. I never saw hardly anything about it. There, the flyers weren't even distributed from my understanding until Saturday morning. There was supposed to be music at the parking lot here by City Hall and, and band playing at the tree lighting. I don't know about the tree lighting. I didn't make it down there. We had a late arriving guest and so I was not able to make it down there. Um, but I, I know that the music didn't happen in here. Um, you know, I, I hope that the, that those, uh, people got paid for, for, you know, blocking out their schedule and being ready to do it. I don't know what, and again, I don't know if that was Main Street money, um, and how that was handled. But this feeds back to the entire ish, set of issues or that surrounded the Main Street Board and, and the problems that, that we were having. You know, there's no opportunity for input. We are spending Main Street funds with, with no authorization or accountability. And this continues. And, you know, you, you talk about wanting to recruit new people for the board. Everybody knows what's going on. This is not any kind of secret. So I find it difficult to believe you're going to get a whole lot of volunteerism for this, you know, given how things are being handled. Um, one of the things in Director Mish's report was that there have been some, and this is getting away now, a little bit away from the Small Business Saturday, but not entirely. Um, we've put new plantings, uh, in front of the police station and in front of City Hall and in front of the annex. Um, you know, was this, uh, were these Main Street funds that did this? And if so, why was this done only on the public buildings and not for the merchants? Because Main Street is for the merchants. It's not for the city. Now, I, I, the, the term slush fund has been batted around and when we see things like this, that's where your mind goes. You know, was, were Main Street funds that are supposed to be there to help the businesses used to gussy up city buildings instead? Have, uh, kind of going a little deeper into some of the issues that, that are out there. Given, you know, a large grant to what is essentially a seasonal bu- business with a small footprint. While Director Mish continues his personal warfare with the Stevenson's, so we give twenty-seven thousand dollars to the business and I'm not faulting Red Truck for, for accepting the grant.
I'm a little confused. How, what warfare with the Stevenson's?
Please.
No, I, I would like you to explain it. If you're going to say that here, I'd like you to explain it.
So for the past three years, Director Mish has done pretty much everything in his power to. Trying to find the right word because subvert isn't it, but something close to that. But it is common knowledge, at least it is for those of us who see it happening, that you know, there have been things said, you know, go back to the Main Street meetings and some of the things that were said to Mrs. Stephenson. I, you know, I think that his actions in that regard speak for themselves. One of the, one of the things that they have, you know, talked about doing is open an ice cream shop. And so here the city turns around and gives $27,000 to somebody else to open an ice cream shop.
I mean, they opened the ice cream shop.
Yes, yes, they did because they were given $27,000 to do it and to help them do it.
They could have applied for the same grant.
What grant? What process?
Was that not through the facade improvements?
Right, that was the building improvement program.
So, you know, how?
And I know they know about that grant. Here's what I will say, is I have received a text message from some of those people basically saying I need to get on board with their Main Street vision to the point where I've had a text from those exact same people saying that I don't know what's coming for me. So again, the idea that... What is your actual... I don't know, to say a city employee is waging war against a business. And then again, you haven't really said anything that signifies that to me, other than you're mad that somebody else got a grant for an ice cream shop because your friend didn't
I will find out about the... My assumption is that yes, it was probably through Main Street money. The map, my understanding is the map was intended to promote the events, the activities that were featured on Small Business Saturday. So, you know, of course, could that ad have looked different? Certainly. You know, but I think it was, and the one that went in the newspaper, I believe, was published before or was submitted before ambassadors offered space for the face painter. So, you know, that was updated house and by social media before people published Saturday. So kind of a scramble to get that.
You can't fit 18 businesses on that map.
No, but when you, when you open a, you know, and just look at this, it looks like there are two businesses in town. I mean, this doesn't look like anything that shows any kind of, you know, why would I spend my time to go there? So, you know, it's like, oh, well, they're having this, but there's only two places to go to actually do any shopping and one of them is a cake shop. So how much do I really need there? And I'm not sure what's at this other one. You know, I just don't think that this is, that this was a good expenditure. I don't think it was a... I think it did more harm than good. I think that speaks to issues that we had about not having any kind of input or plan. Like something that was kind of just put out there. You have a couple of your mainstay businesses here on the street that weren't invited to even be part of this. You know, we, at George's on York, we did the wreath thing last year at our place along with some of the other things that were done. Nobody ever even contacted us or asked us about it. And like I said, I know that that is true for a number of the other businesses and my
I imagine the ban part, though, had to have been to the 20-degree weather.
Yeah, well, and I understand that. I'm not saying that that wasn't the right thing to cancel it.
I'm just trying to think of a solution for the ban part is probably the 20-degree weather.
Right, and I'm not saying it wasn't necessarily a bad thing to cancel it because of that. But, you know, if that was, if that was your draw along with just two businesses, you know, that's a kind of a disappointment. And, you know, and to me, this speaks to the things that we need to do to get Main Street right is to address this so that we're not... Shouldn't be leaving anybody behind in this.
We also shouldn't be attacking businesses that are here, like the ice cream shop. I think that's very unfair that a business owner took their time to apply for a grant and got it and was successful and employed people in this town and we're attacking them because they did it first? Like that just doesn't, that doesn't sit well with me, but...
Not only that, again, trust me, the map's not the Main Street's issues. My personal opinion, Main Street issues are businesses not being open. But that's a topic for another time.
Well, and that's, you know, some of the discussion that needs to happen around Main Street. But the issue is that if we can't draw people here, then, you know, the reason businesses aren't open is because there's no one there to come to them. So, you know, we have some, you know, and there's a chicken and egg thing to that, but it seems as though we aren't doing the best we can for them.
I will agree that we certainly need to address our Main Street program and start moving forward on it so that we can get people in place to, well, things that will benefit all the businesses downtown. And having more participation in that can only help.
Do they have an updated list of businesses that participated in the survey? Because all these businesses that want to be included in stuff, I feel like didn't do what we asked them to do. So there's two sides to this coin.
I think, I think we did send that out after last month's presentation. I think we did send out the survey details, but if not, I'll make sure that they do get circulated.
And I will say, I mean, I know there's a couple of businesses that don't want to get involved in all the drama that is related to the Main Street.
Well, they're, and, you know, I'm going from recollection here, but I believe that there were a couple of businesses that specifically said they did not want to be involved in Main Street activities going forward because of what had happened, you know, with, there were concerns about, you know, the fact that we couldn't get a monthly financial report that everybody could agree on as far as, you know, the level of detail or, you know... There were some businesses that said, you know, I'm, you know, I want to step back. I don't want to be involved in Main Street stuff. And that may have been, that may be a factor as to why some businesses weren't contacted. I have not spoken to Director Michi about, you know, how he went about reaching out to businesses to gauge their interest for activities. You know, I certainly did hear some criticism Saturday from a business that wasn't on the map. But again, I think the map was identifying where the activities were. And, you know, hindsight, you know, would it, could it, should it, you know, could it have, should it have said, you know, and come visit our, you know, our other downtown businesses and perhaps given a list, you know? I mean, certainly there are things that could have been done differently. I will not argue that at all. And, you know, if we have an active Main Street group that's hoping to develop these, you know, instead of one individual, it's going to be a better process going forward, I think. But given, given that we don't have a functioning board and volunteer group at this point in time, the choice really is we do nothing until that's back in place or we try to kind of keep the lights on and do a little something to keep some level of interest and support going. So, you know, I won't disagree that what we're doing now is not ideal, but I think it's better than doing absolutely nothing. And for those who have been around for a while, may recall that after about 2017 or so, our Main Street program kind of fizzled and our economic development director basically kept the lights on, so to speak, even though there hadn't been regular board meetings, there hadn't been committees active. It was pretty much the economic development director trying to keep things moving and bring people in when they could and, you know, keep the program afloat while we were struggling with, you know, getting a board to meet regularly. And there were, there were some problems, you know, years ago, pre-COVID, you know, and we've just been trying to kind of keep, keep things happening downtown to some degree while we've been lacking, you know, a board that meets regularly and committees that are contributing.
I think that we would be better served at this point in time to let the individual businesses take care of themselves until we get our own house in order. To do things poorly just to say that we did things is not a good plan.
But what we have, what we're dealing with, I said this when we had, were dissolved, lack of leadership. Seems to me would be incumbent, Main Street manager slash economic development director, knowing that there was no formal board to bounce things off of, to take the initiative himself to visit their businesses downtown with suggestions and plans and get them to weigh in on what they think about them. And then follow the directions that the downtown, that the downtown community provides to them. That's, that's how it was successful in the past. The success we had in Main Street years ago came from the businesses to the council, not from the council to the businesses. And I think the magic of the whole thing is that the Main Street manager slash economic development director, and I really see a very gray line between these two because they're the same thing, should be the innovator or the idea person that goes to the businesses with ideas and gets reactions and then fine tones those reactions to achieve results. It seems like he would be trying much harder now that there's not a board to bounce things off of, to bring this community together, this downtown business community together than is apparent. I visited with Mich yesterday for an hour or so and we talked about a lot of things. And one of the things that we talked about was some of his experiences talking with other Main Street managers. One of the good ideas that he mentioned that he heard from Thurmond, I believe it was, was that the manager at that municipality, I don't know whether it was Thurmond or not, but I'm just thinking it was. Go to businesses and suggest to them things to do. If it were a fixed up nature, we can help you do that. Or if it's a promotional nature, if it was a painting nature, whatever it happened to be, whatever the issue was, it would be coming from, from, from the city to the businesses. We want to help you achieve these goals. How do we do that? What do you, what do you need from us? I visited my daughter in Virginia over the Thanksgiving holidays and she lives in a town called Orange, which is between Charlottesville and Hough Pepper. And the nearby town named Gordonsville had renovated their Main Street. And I went through there earlier in the month and so I really was impressed with what I saw. And I went back and I spent some time walking Main Streets. The Main Street's no bigger than our Main Street. Population wise, Gordonsville's about 1,500 people compared to what we've got. And the place is fantastic. I mean, it really is an outstanding display of what can happen. My son-in-law, who is prominent in the, in the Orange County community, he's the commercial vice president of a local bank down there, gets to talk to a lot of the business people. He says the key to what made this happen in Gordonsville was everybody was signed on to getting this done. I took a bunch of photographs and I'm going to try to figure out how to send them to everybody before Monday night. And I just want you to look at this and see, see what it could be when everybody works together. But right now, nobody's working together. That's the problem. You know, if the Main Street, the Main Street manager needs to be a unifier, not a divider. And I don't know how we accomplish that, but that's got to be the goal, the first step that we go, we talk about this wonderful plan. This wonderful plan is not going to work at all unless he's got people to back it. Everybody is opposed to it before they even hear what they have to say about it. It's, you know, we're exercising, exercising futility to go over this thing. We've got to, we've got to get people working together and on the same page and agree to what we want to accomplish or we're not going to accomplish anything. Everybody's going to just do their own thing. Nobody listens to me. Nobody cares about me. Nobody wants my opinion. Nobody cares about my business. No, we hear that all the time. So maybe, maybe rather than come up with the top three things we want to see this report deliver, maybe we ought to just set a time aside, maybe in a month or so, and have a Main Street meeting or just a general economic development meeting and just talk about what we, what we're going to do as part of our comprehensive plan. It's something that the comprehensive plan committee needs to know about. How do we want to see our downtown? What do we want it to look like? What kind of shops do we want there? And, you know, it's, I don't think we're going to get anywhere unless we have, have leadership unifying this community downtown. Because if everybody's left to their own devices, that's, that's going to be exactly the way it is right now.
You make some very interesting points and something that I keep circling back to is when we think about the Main Street program or when, you know, when you, when you read about it, it's always referred to as this grassroots approach that, you know, it, and for Tonnytown, I think that has always been a challenge for us. I think, you know... I think, you know, our efforts to focus on the downtown and, you know, improve conditions and, you know, kickstart revitalization have all been city-driven or driven by a couple individuals with the majority of the community being less enthusiastic about getting involved and, you know, really driving something. I think it's been almost more of a top-down rather than the bottom-up approach that, that Main Street is supposed to be.
And that's, and that's where we've gone, that's where we've gone wrong.
And yet without, without there being a city.
Well, here's the, here's the perspective from, from, from the business side and from, you know, and, and, you know, obviously I talk to these people all the time and I know you guys do too, but it's.
The perception is not there that, that, that that's what we want to do. That's, that's what we, that's the convincing that we need to, to have. We need to have an individual that, that business leaders know that, yeah, I know he's gonna fight for me before city council. I know that he's gonna be my advocate before city council and they're gonna help us be successful. And there's nobody on this city council that wants to discourage business from coming downtown. Everybody here wants to do everything we can to get the bound downtown as lively and as prosperous as it can be. But without leadership, with, with, with just, with factions, I guess is the best way to say it.
People fighting for control.
Fighting one another, it's not gonna happen.
Well, but part of that also is empowerment. And the, it, it's the lack of empowerment that I, that I get when I talk to people, that what they say doesn't matter. Nobody came to them and asked them for their opinion. Nobody said, hey, would you like to try this idea? You know, things come down from on high at them or they're just simply, you know, their suggestions are ignored. And I would tell you that that seems to be a longstanding thing with Tawny Town from people that I talk to just in, in general, not necessarily businesses here, but, but business people that I know and, and, you know, people, you know, in, in other places who are familiar with Tawny Town. It just seems that that's, that's, that's the missing piece is the empowerment of, of the businesses to essentially control their fate in this and not have their fate controlled.
I, I hear you, but I'm, I'm, I suppose struggling a little bit with, with that idea because I don't feel like the city is standing in anyone's way. And, you know, certainly if a couple of businesses want to get together and cross-promote or do their own promotions, no one is saying they can't do that. And what I'm seeing is that the city not stepping up, doing things to help promote the businesses or things like that is being, you know, largely criticized. And if we have a Main Street program, that's what we need to be doing, certainly. But I don't think the city is standing in anyone's way from doing what they think their business needs to do to thrive.
Exhibit A is the ice cream shop that we're attacking.
Well, again.
It's not the problem with Main Street.
Again, it's not standing in the way, it's encourage, it's, it's. The impression I got from visiting Gordonsville was that that municipality provided the stage for success for the downtown businesses. They created an environment where their local, where the local businesses flourish. Now, I'd say the, the downtown area that I'm talking about is no bigger than our downtown area.
I'd say it's even smaller.
And, and I walked the whole thing and one vacant store. That one vacant store had a Christmas tree on, in one window. It had a big poster in the other window with a finger pointing, visit our other locations down the street. It had a lot of feel-good, you'll see it when I send you the pictures. But it was an, it was, the, the municipality's job was to create the environment for success. And that's where we're falling short. We're, we say, go do, you know, you do anything you want to do, we'll support you. Well, I'm not sure that's the right attitude. I think we need to provide, this is the, the, again, the, the stage for, for success. We need to, to say, we're gonna support doing everything you want to do and this is what, this is how we're gonna do it. And, and then let the businesses take it from there. Then you, then you will have businesses who want to be part of the, of an advisory board. They know that the city is receptive to, to combine in a unified effort from local business people. And I guess that's, that's the impression that I get when I go down to, go downtown Gordonsville and I, and again, you'll say a lot more of this one.
You know, and I'm not saying that the city is per se standing in somebody's way, but I think when there is a Main Street organization and people, businesses are looking to that organization for some help and leadership and they don't, they aren't seeing it, then that becomes, it becomes discouraging. So we need, you know, somehow we need to get back to where we're all pulling in the same direction and, and right now that's just not what we have. And, you know, when you, when you get businesses, Small Business Saturday should have been the, you know, one of the, the best days of the year in our, in our downtown for our small businesses, you know, and, and several, several of our, you know, we only have several, anchor small businesses, you know, were simply left out of the process.
Yeah, but did they know it was Small Business Saturday? It's always the day of Saturday after Thanksgiving. So they should have been in their shops.
Well, they were.
Having their own thing, like, and I think that's where the, the, the biggest misstep is that there is this, this disconnect as to what the guidelines are, what the city is supposed to be actually doing. We are not supposed to be running people's businesses because the last thing they want is for the government involved in their businesses. We are supposed to just be doing things to get people downtown and then they take the next step and get them into their shop. So even if they did not get an invitation to what was, what was being done, for whatever reason, they should have utilized the opportunity they were given i- if people were coming downtown. And I'm not saying it was a great success, but we have to stop fighting what that system should be.
Deja Vu had, they had cider and cookies and goodies and stuff in their store and we did an open house over here.
And it's, and it's.
And Paul had the face painter in there on his own initiative to do that.
Did they advertise that? Cause I didn't see that advertised anywhere. So that's the problem, like we, everybody has to do their part. Like deja vu can't wait for someone to advertise for them.
No, but, but, but Main Street is supposed to be kind of that clearinghouse that brings those businesses together and it provides that, that omph of power for.
But too many businesses are expecting our city to advertise their businesses and that is not what it is. We're supposed to be getting people to the downtown and creating an environment that's inviting so that those businesses can then take that next step and pull them in. But we've got a history of the people not having the shops open regular hours for whatever reason. And I get it, having a business is not easy. It's hard. But if there's no cooperation between the city and the businesses, if there is no set guidelines, which is what we're supposed to be trying to accomplish, but then we have to stick by them. We have to stop setting these other precedences where we are gonna do something for some businesses and not for others.
Absolutely.
Because that's where the problem's coming in. So we've gotta stop that.
And that was some of the feeling that came out of this the other day was that, hey, they're, they're pushing these people's business but not, but not mine.
And you're right, and that's not something that should be happening because we shouldn't be pushing anything.
Right, that's not, that is not for us to do.
No. But it's, it's certainly not anything that's gonna get fixed very soon because it's been years in the works and there's definitely maybe some other things we need to be doing and ideas that we can have. Our main job right now is just to make the guidelines on what the Main Street's job is and then kind of reeling everybody in and saying, this is what we're doing. We're not doing this, we're not doing that. Yet people have great ideas. Take them to the businesses. It's not for the city to do. And we, and we've gotta find out what that separation is.
Small Business Saturday should be the highlight of the year for the businesses on Local point of the whole scheme of promotion for Main Street. And when people feel alienated or not included or uninvited, we miss that opportunity. One time where you turn on Today Show when they're talking about Small Business Saturday, you see it in national media, National Times and, and what do we do? We say, well, it was awful cold on Saturday, we didn't really go over too well. What could we have done better? That's the question we need to ask ourselves.
I'm not gonna lie though, if I was any business not on Main Street, I'd be, I'd be wondering why every council session, half the council session is talking about. We have, we have a lot of business in Tawny Town that isn't specifically on Main Street. And the amount of time we spend on this, for something that I know is not gonna satisfy.
Before we move on, I do have an answer about the music. The DJ got here, was setting up and apparently his equipment wasn't working in the cold. And the band canceled Saturday morning because it was a wind chill of 22 degrees. So, yeah, so that's, that's what happened with the music. So that, that one I did have an answer for.
Right, so we were, in, 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 in one sense, we were the, you know, victim of just bad luck and, and the weather, you know, and, and those kinds of things are sometimes gonna happen to you, but it just, it just, the whole tenor of the day as I was talking to the, to the other business owners, it just seemed that, like, why didn't we do more? Why wasn't more, why wasn't more done? You know, where were the passports? Where were the American Express kids? Where were the? I weren't, you know, I know that, for example, deja vu, they did go and, and ask, asked them one time, you know, can we put a couple of tables in here? And she said, well, no, I don't really have room for tables to do anything like that. But then that was the end of it, she never heard another word. You know, so, um, there's, you know, it was a lot of moving parts and we're not gonna solve all this tonight, but I wanted to bring this out and make this part of the discussion because, you know, from, from the small business standpoint, and, and I'm kind of surprised a little at your attitude, Mr. Mayor, because you're a business on Main Street.
I advocate for myself. Again, I understand that there's more businesses than just the businesses on Main Street. And my, and my worries is you don't, again, I think you talk to a selective group of people. And it isn't, trust me, when I go to the businesses and I talk with them, their main concern is the businesses that aren't open. The spots that are anchors on our Main Street, that is what actually drives a Main Street, that is what actually drives businesses, that's what drives people out there. It isn't because the town doesn't have a committee, it's businesses that people want to shop at, that is the basics of business. And the idea that it's being thrown at the city's feet all the time, that it's the city's fault that this isn't successful, that's not the truth. The truth is there's a power struggle, people who want to be the leaders of the Main Street Committee or the Main Street Movement, whatever it is, but I don't see it to serve all of Main Street, I see it to serve certain people. That's as much as I'll say on it, but. That's still city manager report or did we get to department reports?
I think we kind of moved into departmental reports.
Okay. Department reports, Councilman Cheney?
So I have some things to share in the spirit of advertising. The Police Department is having some upcoming events. Ms. Haley Ingles asked me to share in the event that someone doesn't have social media or the event that someone missed it. This Sunday, December the 8th, is their sixth annual Pack the Police Car Food Drive. That is happening at Kenny's from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Tawny Town Police Department personnel will be collecting non-perishable food and hygiene items for the Trinity Lutheran Church Food Pantry and the Wans Chevrolet Christmas for Community Kids. That campaign will be collecting toys and cash donations for their toy drive. So please come out and support the town and the Police Department in providing food for those in need this holiday season. Their second event is December 15th at the police station where they will hold their second annual December to Remember event from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Ages infant to 18 years old will be included in getting, receiving a gift to any and all who are in need, people just need to show up. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there for free pictures with Santa and there will also be food trucks and refreshments, which will be free for all attendees. The Police Department is still collecting gifts and the raffle prize is currently at $600 cash. Every toy that someone in the community donates earns you a raffle ticket, so that, that prize is rising. So the Police Department's excited, come out and support them and hopefully that will benefit the community. And I think that there's also a Christmas market this weekend at the bowling alley.
Yes.
So those are some big events happening this weekend.
Councilman Fuller, did you want to go over?
Yep, Saturday we have our tree lighting at Memorial Park. It starts at 4:30. It will start with the candy cane hunt, there'll be musical performances and a hayride per typical and then special guests at 5:30. Santa will be there to take pictures in the gazebo. That's until 8 o'clock.
Do you have anything else for department reports?
Unless there are questions about.
The Department of Public Works wants to remind the public that due to Christmas and New Year's Day falling on Wednesday this year, trash collection and recycling will be collected on Thursday, December 26th and Thursday, January 2nd.
Gotta put our trash out to Christmas evening.
Also, the city will be providing Christmas tree pickup. Ecology Refuge will be picking up trees on Saturday, January 11th, only one day. No yard waste or loose pine branches will be collected this Christmas trees.
Any other comments, questions, concerns for department reports? Hearing non-proceeding forward, legal report. Jim, did you have anything for you tonight or are we good on that?
We're good on that.
Good on that? Sounds good. Heading down to new business, monthly financial report, questions, comments, concerns by council. Hearing non-proceeding forward, accounts payables, questions, comments, concerns by council. Hearing non-proceeding forward, Ward of Westview Drive Waterline Replacement Project. Yeah, that's, should be.
Right, we just had the bid opening for that today. We received four bids and CDM Smith is committed to getting us a recommendation letter by the end of the week, so we'll have that for Monday night.
Good questions, comments, concerns regarding that? Hearing non-proceeding forward, CDM Smith, 2025 rate proposal, questions, comments, concerns by council. Hearing non-proceeding forward, approval of 2025 through 2020, through 2030 lease Bollinger Park, Matthew Clark, questions, comments, concerns by council.
For both of these, Jim, do we open this to the public? I'm just curious, do, is it?
This year we did not because we already had leases existing on, on those two parcels, so we gave them the option just to renew their leases. We didn't invite bids or do a public process.
I, I just thought that there, you know, there are other people in the area of the properties that probably would like the opportunity to, you know, to be given.
When, right, when we first opted to, to do the lease, we did do some outreach, you know, to folks in, to folks who had expressed interest because we did have a few folks reach out to us. And we tried to make it known that, that we were entertaining lease offers at the time.
Right.
But, you know.
And it just seems, like if it was a year-long thing, that would be one thing. We're talking about five years. We're talking about five years.
Yeah.
Like, shouldn't that be something that we offer?
And also, are these, are they?
I mean, there's not going to be a million people that want it.
Yeah, no, but I.
Very specific few that may be interested.
The other question that I had is with a five-year lease, if, you know, these are city properties, if we wanted to do something else with that property, do we have, I didn't, I kind of glanced through the lease, but I, you know, do we have right of termination for our convenience?
We do, right. So and if we, right, there's, if we, for some reason, you know, try to exit the lease after, you know, the property's been planted, you know, there are certainly protections in there for the farmer that, you know, we would have to buy, basically buy out of it in that scenario. And we've already seen with the with the Fringer Road lease, when we did the Pollinator Meadow and the development of Hollinger Park, that, you know, that reduced the area that was tillable for him. So, you know, that obviously reduced the lease expense. So, again, we we opted just to renew the leases without going through a public process at this point. So if if council wants us to do that, we certainly can. But but no, we didn't.
I don't know how much work needs to be done, you know, now. Like, I don't know how quickly they need to know. But it just seems like there could be a way to at least reach out to people that we know have been interested in the past and just say, by the way, this is what's going on. Is there any interest?
Well, if if that's, yeah. If if council would like us to do that, we certainly can do some sort of advertisement, you know, for the acreage.
I mean, I'm not counsel, but I'm in favor of it. If council wanted to.
Put it out for. Can we, how soon do we need to have the the lease done? How much time do we have? We wanted to put out the feelers and see if somebody else was interested.
I, yeah, I don't know what the timing is, you know, for cultivation and fertilizing and things like that that are that are, you know, pending, I guess, this, well, fertilization, I guess, mostly this time of year.
Get more information before Monday? And then when we get to the vote on Monday, we'll discuss some more.
Yeah, I'll talk with Lurie on Monday about it, yeah. And we're not, we're not talking about large, large sums of money either for us to spend a lot of money, say, taking out a newspaper ad or something, because that's.
And that's what I said, if you could just reach out to the people who have shown an interest in the past, maybe that would be enough. And and I don't know, you know, how many of that's been or if they're even still.
See what you can come up with for Monday.
Yeah, if I will ask council if 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 anybody's aware of someone interested in farming the properties to please share that with with me. So I'm I'm only aware of of three or four individuals who have expressed any interest in in farming city properties over the years.
We'll get back to it on Monday, see. Next up, approval of 2025 2030 lease Festival Park, Robert Bowers. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding that? I know we kind of.
Out of the same thing.
Same idea.
Yep.
Same thing.
Heading down, approval of special event permit, Alessa Richards Car Show, Memorial Park, October 4th, 2025. Questions, comments, concerns by council. Hearing non-proceeding down to public comment pertaining to agenda items. Any public comments tonight? Hearing non, I am proceeding down to adjournment. Would someone like to? Looking for a second?
Second that, happily.
All those in favor, signal five to say aye.
Aye.
Pose name. We are adjourned. Thank you.